Welcome to the May 24th work session of the Penn Field Playing Board. You're watching this live on channel 1303. Don't change that dial. Okay, Allison, you want to call a roll?
Hetske.
Here.
Bastian.
Here.
Knauer.
Here.
Tidings.
Here.
Burton. Oh, he isn't here. Sorry, Nursingar.
Here.
Sangster.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Weiser.
Here.
Do you think television still has dials?
Dials. Probably several. There's probably several people in this town who have a dial TV still.
What? Just go to 1303.
What do you say now? Don't touch those buttons. All right, we got minutes for May 10th. Hopefully everyone had a chance to review them. Entertained a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Tidings and Knauer.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Steve.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
All right. Those are approved. Zach, you want to quickly go through the table applications and action items?
Sure thing. We have four table actions, uh, table applications this evening. The first three, uh, we have no updates, so there's no action required by the board this time for any of those applications. So I'll move on to our fourth item on the agenda for 280 Panorama Trail. It's a continued review and discussion of a sketch plan for a four lot residential subdivision. Again, at 280 Panorama Trail, uh, the board previously discussed this at its public hearing on the 10th of this month. Application was tabled pending the board's review of the applicant's written responses that were submitted on both May 9th and May 10th. Following up on that, the applicant provided additional responses to comments, a revised site plan, and several other supporting documents regarding the site plan on May 18th in preparation for this meeting for the board to consider. The site plan, as we see here on the screen tonight, has additional details for grading on proposed lot four, which was kind of a, a topic of discussion at the last meeting, regarding kind of feasibility of the lot. Staff had concerns in its PRC memo about, um, this, this lot regarding the drainage patterns that exist in that area, the existing steep slope of not only this area of the site, but also around the site. So they provided some feedback regarding that topic. Other concerns that were mentioned briefly, again, we had, the board wanted time to review the responses that were submitted that day, were regarding the access road to the site. Currently, uh, the site has a very steep, uh, slope coming from Panorama Trail, going into the site. The construction of the proposed driveway, while private, would require just under a 10% slope to get down into the property safely. That is allowed under our private drive design criteria is, but it would require what would, we expect to be a large amount of fill for the site, even though they'd have to, they have some material out there for the proposed pond, but we have to bring in materials. And I know the chairman asked the question during the public hearing, what was the proposed plan, if there is one now, about how that road would get constructed? And while this is a sketch plan, um, I think it's a fair question to ask, and not all the information was available yet, the amount of fill is not available yet, those calculations have not been, have been performed. The town shares that same concern about that, about how that road would get constructed. Panorama Trail is a town-owned road, um, so we do have to ensure, we'd have to ensure that that road is protected during construction. There are EPods present on the site for steep slopes, for wood lots. While water courses are not identified, we do know that two drainage, um, drainage ways do enter the site currently, so that is another item for consideration. Basically, with that being said, um, I just leave it to the board to kind of pick up where we left off with the presentation and based on the applicant's submittal on the 18th with the, this updated plan and responses to comments, to talk about what's proposed. Again, it's a four lot subdivision, this is sketch plan. And open up to the board's discussion at this point.
Jim sent me an email today with some notes that he had gotten off of the International Residential Code 2015 edition.
Yep, it's the state of the code.
He can't make it tonight, but he asked that those be put into the record and, and suggested to the applicant to be considered.
Okay.
Section proposing.
Let's, talking about, uh, steep slopes and buildings being located either on the top of the slope and at the bottom, at the toe of the slope. And it relates to, uh, how close they should be placed depending on the, uh, slope.
Depending on the location.
Angle of the slope.
It does talk about what is...
I can forward it to you here. Is that diagram right at the bottom of that?
Yep.
So he brought that up, which I think is a good point.
Right, and this is also a document that was provided by the applicant to, Jim pulled up the 2015 code, this is the 2010 code, the language is pretty similar.
Right.
But we can, uh, make sure that's definitely part of the record.
Okay. How's everybody feel about having, well, four lots versus three, but what are people's viewpoints on this? Any comments?
I haven't seen the proposal prior to watching online yet.
Okay. Terry, Bob?
I'm, I'm still concerned with particularly the, I guess it would be the northmost lot.
Lot number four.
Just the elevations and the slopes around that structure. You know, with the, the final elevation lines, it's compared to the other three lots, um, it just looks, to me anyway, a little bit intense.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah, like, uh, I just, I think it's a large project for that area. I thi- I think there's going to be some environmental issues, but I know, uh, yeah, Jared did a nice job trying to pick, you know, put everything in there.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we, uh, we addressed the environmental issues and he addresses them properly, and we'll take a look at it.
We certainly, yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have three instead of four, because, you know, there's a, I'm sure it's going to be like somewhat of a sensitive area down there. I've been down there and looked at it a lot, you know, a lot of times I go by it, but
Yeah.
So, but, uh, yeah, I mean...
I agree. I think that, uh, it's a pretty good engineering task, and, um, it's a lot of work to do with that. In terms of the, uh, environmental impact to the steep slopes, kind of the EPods, I think we need to look at that a lot more closely.
Speaking to that, if I could add something I meant, I forgot to mention earlier, was that the Conservation Board, um, was assigned this sketch plan to give some initial feedback on the project. That was assigned at their last meeting, and they'll be meeting on June 2nd to provide a report to this board, and a copy will be provided to the app...
June what? Fifth.
What did I say?
Second.
My bad.
Saturday.
Not on Saturday. We'll meet on the 5th. I don't know why I thought that. Anyway, it's another Tuesday meeting. Provide a copy of that report to the applicant and to the board as well, um, to either include with whatever sketch plan letter you draft tonight, um, or to be reviewed prior to issuing a sketch letter, um, so that you have the opportunity to review that letter from the Conservation Board, again, with their initial feedback, given what's been provided by the applicant.
Okay.
And they will look at things like the wood lot, um, the impact of wood lot and to a degree, the steep slopes. The steep slopes will fall more to engineering. I mean, we've taken a look at just what our code calls for for EPods, you know, anything over 15% grade today is considered a steep slope EPod by our town code. And, you know, I know the building code calls out things for a, a one-on-three slope, a one, uh, 15% is not as steep as that, so, you know, the town has always taken it to the next level, um, to make sure that whenever possible, potentially environmentally sensitive areas are protected or impacts are mitigated through site plan development. And I think we have a, a unique site here that, um, as you said, poses some challenges, um, and EPods are present and, um, definitely require that higher level of review that would be required at a preliminary final stage.
Yeah, I think that, that, that entire area of the town on Panorama Trail is very interesting. Topographically, it's challenging, but that's also what gives it its character, which I think is, you know, makes it attractive for somebody to build a house there, live there. You know, you first look at this and you see a cliff off the road and you say, all right, how are you going to get down there? Seems to be demonstrated here that it can be done, that it's how it can be done, and what kind of impacts it could have on the road, on, on the site, erosion.
Exactly. I think when you look at this, whether it's one lot, three lots, four lots, whatever that number is, um, you know, we always do a site plan review when it comes to that type of development, and part of, you know, we, part of this board's sketch, sketch letter, you know, would most likely, would include, um, detailed construction notes phasing, um, about the construction of the road and protecting Panorama Trail during that process. All that is certainly important, and we have to be detailed with a, with a formal site plan application later on.
So what's the, what's the angle of the road? You said 10%?
As proposed.
Coming from Panorama?
Yeah. Doug, you can drag down.
Look at the profile, Doug.
And that's a private drive?
Correct.
So who's going to plow it and salt it in the winter time?
Private contractor. It's, it's basically a driveway from our standpoint as the town, Panorama is our road, we take care of that.
But some of the concerns I have, just looking at that, is, you know, in our inclement weather, it's going to be tough to navigate.
It would be a climb. To AJ's point, there are a number of driveways out there today that have to climb up from Panorama Trail to get up too.
Four hundred feet.
That's, that's a stretch. It does, it does, we talked about this at the last meeting, it does, it does level out as you get closer to the road, so you kind of have a landing, um, before you have to enter traffic, so it does offer you that opportunity to safely enter traffic. I think, Mike, you said it's, is it right around 3%? Below 3%, which is what our code requires.
Right at the intersection?
Yeah, at the crest of it, as you...
2.7, right there.
Yep. So that's been, that's been accounted for. But again, as I said earlier, the 10% is the maximum allowed by our code for private drives, so it's right at, just about at that threshold.
Do they calculate how many cubic yards of fill they're going to need?
Not at this time.
Not yet. Sketch plan.
Yeah. I mean, to, for a sketch plan, we've got a lot of good information right now, which...
Do you mind repeating that question? How many cubic yards of fill? Uh, I did a rough calculation.
We're having a...
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
It's okay. So we'll get that information, certainly. I think those are things that need to go into the letter. I think I'd like to, uh, have the Conservation Board's input in their, uh, response of their letter to us before we send out an actual letter. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but...
Yeah. We'll have...
This is one that, you know, we're, we also need to look at seeker, and if, if this is a type one action.
We'll have Conservation Board's draft by the 14th?
We'll have their actual report.
Okay.
By the 14th.
Okay.
We'd give that to you, obviously, in your drop before the meeting, so you can...
We can review it.
Review it and incorporate any comments, or, I mean, at a minimum, we'd attach it as, as an amendment to the letter or as an attachment to it, but if there's any comments you want to call out, we can include that in the board's letter. To your point about seeker, um, I think it would definitely benefit the board that a future application include a full EAF for the project. Staff can take a look at what potential seeker recommendation might, might be between now and the next meeting, just so the board's aware of what it would be classified as.
It's not a huge project, but the, the nature of it lends itself to that type of scrutiny.
Sure. I mean, like, I think I, I don't know, I can't remember if I mentioned it at the last meeting, but, you know, years ago, the town did review this site for a different project, uh, required, it was called for town homes, but not four lots here, but the same questions came up about providing a adequate, safe entrance road, um, as well as concerns for, um, impacts to the environmental features of the site.
Have you ever considered like a trestle or a bridge or something instead of fill?
To where?
Would that make any sense?
Not sure.
Okay. So we should begin, uh, preparation of our response letter.
Okay, and I will, I will include elements from the board regarding a detailed engineer's report regarding road construction.
Mm-hmm.
A full, a requirement for a full EAF upon any submission of a future site plan. Obviously, it would require detailed responses for the factors for consideration for site plan, subdivision, steep slopes, wood lots.
Mm-hmm.
Any impacts to drainage as well. Something I'd like to ask the board at this time, um, because regardless of which way it goes, um, when a future submission is, is received, if a future submission is received, would the board like staff to, um, enlist the help, the consulting efforts of a geotecul- geotech engineer to review what's been submitted, um, to confirm designs and to ensure that what's being proposed for, I think primarily the roadway, but also for, um, any houses that are kind of built on a sloped area that are designed...
I think that, I mean, it makes sense to do that. We have somebody that specializes in that field available.
I just want to document that in the letter, so it's captured there. Okay?
Yeah.
Got that? Just before we leave the topic, just, because part of the, part of drafting this letter is going to be also addressing three versus four lots. I was just wondering, kind of like, is, do you want more time to think on that between now and the Conservation Board letter, or do we feel more comfortable with three tonight or four? If it can be designed, I'd try, there's kind of some clarity earlier.
Well, I know that the applicant has stated that four lots are, uh, desired to make the whole thing economically feasible. The challenge is that lot number four and its current configuration, uh...
And our EPods.
Yeah, really digs into that slope. So it's something to consider to, in the letter. Three lots versus four, for sure. I think, anyway. No, no.
No, I, yeah. Okay.
I think we should recommend we prefer three lots over the four.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, so that when I'm drafting the letter and you have a chance to look at it again, nothing stands out as you missed what we were saying.
Mm-hmm. All right. Somebody want to move to, to get tabled based on continued preparation and awaiting the additional input from the Conservation Board?
I'll move it.
Yeah?
I'll second.
Okay.
Hetske.
Aye.
Bastian.
Aye.
Knauer.
Aye.
Tidings.
Aye.
Moving on.
Is it going to be like super awesome, or is it...
Okay. So we have one action item for this evening. Is for the McDonald's at Baytown Plaza, uh, address 1854 Empire Boulevard. They're proposing a remodel, uh, similar to what was just reviewed by the board at 25441. I was, I was provided the colors and material samples today, um, by the applicant that are shown on the, the colored elevation drawing, uh, mainly colors for the new ethos wall, as well as the existing brick that's supposed to be painted, along with the, um, the brand walls. Also, before we, before we dive into this too, Doug, could you pull up the site plan? There's also proposed site modifications with this, and I was hoping to tackle this part first before diving into the architecture. Currently, what you see here is a proposed site plan, uh, for kind of like a new parking arrangement. Currently, the handicap parking is, let's jump over to it, I'll let Doug do his magic. Thank you. So what we see on the right is existing today, where you see handicap on the bright side of the, of the parking of the building here, or the north side.
You want to move that to the south side?
To the south side, left side, wherever you want, the front side of the building. It would, they are going to lose a couple spaces as part of that, because they're improving accessibility to the loading, uh, unloading area, as well as the dumpster. You can see it being striped off, uh, by the entrance to the drive-through lane, and to the west, um, to the top of the map here. They're also adding a new sidewalk and crosswalk to Empire Boulevard that currently doesn't exist today. So I just want to get the board's thoughts on those matters, uh, before diving into architecture.
Where, where was the handicap before?
It was on the east side.
Okay. I think where it's being moved to makes more sense, because then you aren't crossing...
Yeah, it's at the entrance.
It's at the drive-through.
Drive-through, yeah. And it's at the entrance, and you're right, you're not crossing any...
Yeah.
Vehicle paths.
And if somebody gets their fries, they're trying to open their straw, and boom, they hit somebody in a wheelchair, so...
Not good.
Not good.
Not a good situation.
Definitely an improvement.
Yep. And I think the sidewalk is a, is added amenity for pedestrian circulation from Empire Boulevard, getting into the site, providing the crosswalk there, I think it's a, uh, good improvement for the site.
Agreed.
From our standpoint of staff. So good with, good with that aspect of it?
That part? Good.
Okay.
Proposed changes, they, for what's happening at that plaza?
Going to architecture now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see how we go.
I don't know how you guys feel, but it's almost like a, you know, I'm not going to say middle finger to the rest of the plaza, but...
It doesn't follow the...
For all the work that we've done and the, you know, plaza owners have done to make that architecturally more pleasing, this is, to me, sadly, like a...
Is this the one that, they're going with this one because, what, it matches the 25441? Is that why they're going?
Yeah, it's, it's what corporate is putting out there for the remodels. This is kind of their standard design of the...
I think when they did the one in Pittsburgh too, they, they matched, uh, all the architectural on one review in Pittsburgh. I'm sure they can come up with something. Although, I'm sure they're not...
I think that we went probably easier than we could have or should have on 441. You know, Mike travels around the country, he sees some pretty nice looking McDonald's. You know, and...
And I, you know, I mean, I go to all the different ones myself, here locally too, and I'm sure they're, you know, the one in Webster, they've done...
You know, get some stone feature walls.
I mean, look, I mean, it's, you know, fit in beautiful there, you know, I'm glad they're, they're doing something with this, because it's long overdue, and it'll, I mean, if they can do something similar to what Baytown's got, work in their architecture, they'll be beautiful.
Yeah.
And they'll be glad to it.
Yeah, this is right in the middle.
Yeah, it's good.
That's the first place you see when you come up down, comparable to that.
We can...
Send them a letter.
And we can, we can, we can, based on that, we can get back to the applicant, um, with those quest requirements, uh, and if you like, we can put him in touch with, uh, the plaza managers too, and just in case there's questions about what elements have been used there.
Yeah, that's fine. That's a good idea.
Again, a lot of, a lot of the plaza today is a lot of earth tones that we see in there with a variety of canopy colors as well, to kind of break up the facade. Yeah, I mean, no doubt the board has done a ton of work over the years through this plaza's redevelopment.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's going on, what, more than a decade now?
It is right in the plaza to a proper...
So are we going back to rezoning for Walmart? Yeah. Yeah, sorry, Bill. Sorry, Bill.
You guys roll.
Time marches on.
So, um, sounded like, sounded like, sounded like a no on what's being proposed.
Yes.
And, uh, we can get back to them, go back to the drawing board. Terry, I can, I can reference, I'll pull up what was done in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
See if I can get that, it's kind of like, similar ideas have been communicated, have been done in the, in the area, you know, to match other plazas, so this, let's see what you guys can come up with.
Been accommodating in the past, I'm not sure if it's the same owners, but McDonald's has been accommodating in the past when they remounting their places, and I'm sure the accommodations based on...
Okay. Uh, we will get back to them with that. Obviously, applicant, applicant's a middle name.
We don't need a motion of this, do we?
I would ask for a motion before we conclude it to at least, um, approve the modified site plan for the parking layout.
I'll move to approve the modi- modified site plan that's submitted.
I'll second.
And, uh, how do we, I don't want that to be construed as, it's all...
Only for the site plan for the parking and... Only for the site plan for the parking improvements and pedestrian, and striping and so on and so forth, what we represented up here and what they've provided. In terms of the architecture, that matter could be tabled tonight, pending revised...
All right, so it'll be a separate?
Yeah, we'll take a separate one on that.
Take sure that resolution's clear though, when you send it to them, that it doesn't include, because you don't want to get to a situation where it's...
Right.
It'll be specific, we'll reference the sheet drawing and so on and so forth.
Okay. Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
And then regarding the architectural, like...
Table that matter until we give us revised plans.
Yes. More in keeping with the nature of architectural features of the rest of the plaza in the area.
Very good. Votes?
No one made a motion?
All right, motion to continue table the architectural.
Second.
Maestro at the table.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Knauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right.
That's all I have.
Can I go back one thing on number four?
Sure.
Something about Seeker in the prior review, but I don't think there was any prior Seeker, because it was a denial of a rezoning. The planning board, I think, just made a...
Recommendation.
Recommendation to the town board, but it failed, and I don't think they made a secret determination, so that's still a clean slate as I look at it, so just to clarify that point.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, that's something that we certainly need to address.
I just didn't, when he said that it would...
I may have mixed a couple things.
I went back and looked at the materials, it's all in your file, but I just to make your ass to be, clarify that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
We got some homework.
Well, failing any presence of a band to accompany us?
Play out.
Or any musical entertainment? Nothing else on our agenda? Guess we will adjourn. Thanks everybody for coming. Happy Memorial Day, yeah. Thank our veterans.